Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming out on Saturday night. And are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna jump right into the public budget hearing on the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed school district budget. And Ruben will hand this over to you to walk us through the work that you and your staff have done.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the budget hearing. We will move along. The agenda tonight is to look at the overview of staffing, students, some tax applications. We'll have some conversations. We'll talk about some items that have caused us to move in certain directions or at least have influenced some decisions moving forward. Certainly, the number of the warrant articles and the content of the warrant articles will be discussed tonight. Some of the warrant articles are, most of the warrant articles have to do with money or have to do with taxation. And then there are some opportunities for community members to serve the school district and this community through some open positions that we'll look at. This first slide here is an overview of staffing. We've maintained staffing over the last four or five years pretty consistent, but even over the last eight years, it's been fairly consistent. What that staffing looks like has shifted a little bit. You can see on the bottom graph there on the left that the teachers, the professional staff, administration, all of that has decreased through the years. That has continued while support staff, individuals having to do with, well, we would say the JRSSA contract would be increasing. Those numbers are increasing by and large within the area of student services. And that has a lot to do with the increased needs in our learners who are coming into our school system. Certainly, you can see the, it start to increase during the COVID and, and this timeframe right now. Also, we had numbers of the pop, the population of our schools stayed pretty steady. Until COVID, we definitely lost some learners during that timeframe. We have not had those learners come back. Yet, we have increased over the last couple of years or this year, sorry, and then we anticipate next year as well. Our numbers in the area preschool, we're very proud of that. We've been able to do that, make that increase currently. Even though we were on the trajectory to continue to add the preschool, to hopefully at some point get into that, that area of universal preschool. We have really reached that for the most part, whereas no one has a waiting list and we've been able to do that through grant funds. Through the use of Esser funds, the district did receive a fair amount of money through Esser that we have determined to really utilize it for what we think it would be not only our school population, but also for the purpose of benefiting the entire community. And so that is why we have the HVAC systems that have been done within the elementary that will be done by the end of this year. So we certainly had to then take that and, and with the opportunity that we had with them working on this. And because is to have this project that's going on right now here, and that is not being paid for by Esser funds, that is being paid through taxation that happened last year on a warrant article and that voted, went through. Also preschool, the Rand Corporation has done ample investigation research on the benefits to preschool. Certainly, we as educators know the educational benefits of and what that means for the plasticity of the, the brain and the neuron development for kids below five years old and how important that is for their future. It is also specifically for communities to know that they, it is researched, at least in the northeast part of the country, some parts out in the west as well, that for every dollar you spend on early childhood, quality early childhood, you get that in return to, to basically two dollars for every dollar you spend. Down south, that is, that can go up to about a four dollars for every dollar you spend. It depends on the state, depends on the economy of the, and the makeup of the communities and so forth. The, so we're, again, we're very proud of the work that we've done there. And we do, you know, certainly want for people to come back. There are reasons why people chose during the pandemic to be away and stay away for a little while. There are some other options that people have. And so currently that is the case. This slide is a neat slide, depends on how you look at it, I guess, if it's a neat slide or not. The orange, and this is a little bit difficult for those in the audience to see, but the orange represents Jaffrey Ringe. And so the black represents the state average. And so for the past several years, really, for the most part, since I've been here since two thousand fifteen, we've been able to be at slightly above or below state average in our cost per pupil. Now, you can see that last year, a lot of those graphs went up substantially because spending across and expenses across the state went up significantly. I think we all understand that that is the case. Because it's happened to everyone's home, to everyone's fuel bills and so forth. Certainly, when inflation occurs, when difficulties, social emotional difficulties perhaps arise due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, those, those couple of years changed things. And so the costs are mandatory costs, are obligatory costs for special education certainly have increased as a result of that, and that's a factor in how we move forward. But all of that said, I'm proud in, in one breath, I'm proud to say that we are about two thousand below the, the state average in spending cost per pupil and we're still providing the education that we are doing. That's amazing. I applaud the creativity of our, all of our staff members, really, and the fact that our community comes together to work together for this purpose. Just to put that out, that's two million dollars. And I mean, others, other people have a different perspective. They can think, oh, my gosh, what could we do with two million dollars? Could we fix our parking lots? Could we do our fields? Could we, you know, do more with that? That would be fantastic. But for the tax, the purpose of talking about taxation and so forth, this is a really solid place to be. We're a thousand underneath Messinic or a couple thousand underneath, a couple other schools in the area, five, six thousand behind another school per pupil. It's, it's, it's a lot of work. Yes. It went up substantially, but we did not, we are not increasing at the same rates as the rest of the state. And so while the increase maybe goes up over these last several years, maybe twenty-five percent, we're hovering around that twenty percent mark. So the line, the graphs are going in a different direction. So we get to the articles, article number one. This has to do with the voting of board members and moderator. To choose, I'll, I'll just read it. This will be, if the, you know, everything's okay, this will be what will be going on to the warrant. To choose the following school district officers. A, one moderator, moderator is always a one-year term. B, a Ringe School Board member, three-year term. C, one Ringe School Board member, a two-year term. The explanation there is that we had a board member who was elected and he and his family have moved out of the area, the district area. We're pleased to have Forbes with us. He's been chosen as the Ringe and has been sworn in for these couple of months until a new person is elected. So that's why that's different than the other three years. And that so, and then we have the D Jaffrey School Board Member, a three-year term. If you're interested in being a candidate for school district offices, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth is the key date. So Wednesday, the twenty-fifth this year, five P M. Sorry, filing, the deadline for filing is five P M. On Friday, February third. So it starts, you can start to put your name in for that on January twenty-fifth. And then it all, it will be closed at five P M. On Friday, February third. I mean, at this point in time, is there a discussion that the board would rather have after that article? Or any comments from, I mean, you want to do public comment after each article?
Ruben, I'd just like to say that looking at those numbers from your previous discussion, the cost per pupil, that was before we before the current year in which we are, our budget is default budget, so. I mean, it is very impressive what the district is, has accomplished under your leadership, especially given the cost at which it's been done.
Doesn't change the fact that it's a lot of money, but I think that the district is a pattern of trying to be as frugal as possible and to provide the best quality at the exact same time. It takes some creativity and I think we'll talk a little bit more about that tonight, too. Move on to article.
Do you want to move that article to official ballot?
We're gonna move them individually. I thought we would do them.
What we should be doing is talking about each article, asking for public input. In this case, we don't have to because it's required by law. All right, so then we vote to move it, move the article to the official ballot.
Okay. So then would you like to make a, a motion to?
Make a motion that we move article one to the warrant official ballot.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Daisy, and thank you, Charles. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and then on the succeeding articles, we will have public discussion. As Charlie pointed out, this one required by law, so it's doesn't require discussion. Oh, and by the way, thank you for being here as members of the public. And if any part of this is, you know, you have questions about or want to ask why we're doing it a certain way, please do, just raise your hand and let us know. Yes.
Hi, this is Nicholas Handy, Communications Coordinator and School Board Secretary, just making a comment before anybody makes a public comment. As all the people in-house can see, we're live streaming this meeting. You can see microphones and things like that, cameras. If you are to make a public comment, I just request that you ask for a microphone from me. That is so that we can catch your audio for the purposes of the livestream.
Remote audience, yeah.
Yeah, so just make sure that before making a comment or asking a question, please request a microphone. I'm happy to bring it to you. And then just, you know, first name, last name, town of residence.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, moving on to article two, I'll read this. Show the school district vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with a warrant or as amended by a vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling thirty million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be twenty-nine million, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school board or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty, colon thirteen, comma, ten, and sixteen to take up the issue of the revised operating budget only. So costs continue to increase. Again, this is what was stated before. We were able to certainly put a lot of that into the default budget because there is a lot that is required by law. Carrie did, we had a session here. If you were able to view that online, Carrie did an incredible job going through all the laws relative to transportation, food service. Obviously, students services, special education, anything to see what, just by the letter of a law, what we are required to because having a default budget this year certainly caused us to have you know, some difficulties, but we also are proud of the fact that our schools, specifically our teachers and the administration of our schools were creative, figured out ways to adjust, figured out ways to completely reorganize their system to be able to meet the fact that they needed to cut seven individuals from the school setting, which we originally thought was going to have to be cut at the elementary level, which of course would, we had forecasted would have had some significant you know, problems. There would have been specific problems relative to behaviors and so forth after the following COVID. The middle school, high school staff came together, they came up with a plan, they worked on refining that plan, got the professional development they needed, implemented the plan, and that's where we're at, and they save jobs. And they, and we still were able to make the cuts effectively. Really, last year, eight and a half total staff members, couple, one point five out of the S A U prior to the default, receiving the default budget. During last year, we certainly had not budgeted for the increases in special education that the, in, the inflation costs that took place within the state of New Hampshire, double-digit, double-digit increases happened without warning within the area of special education across our state out of district placements. We were able to handle that. We, we did have to go in at a period of time so that we had cash flow. Last year, we had to go into our special ed reserve funds to be able to take some money out to make sure that we could continue moving forward. So again, some fantastic work. We cut, we stopped spending very early last year just to make sure that we could week by week and month by month with, thank you to the finance committee for meeting so often to have those updates to make sure that we were on the same page. Carrie would, this is a funny, I think it's funny anecdote is, we were in an office and she said, well, after all of this takes place, and if we don't receive any of the revenue that we think we could get, and we were very fortunate to get a couple items of Medicaid revenue and also some money we had been chasing because of some, some pipes that we had had before that we were able to finally get after chasing it all year long. I think we were down to ten thousand dollars at one point in time, and I said, oh, good, well, that's good. You know, we're in the positive, so that's positive. But we turned out to be in a better spot. Like I said, cash flow was tough, but the costs continue to rise this year for next year. But this year, we have been informed that not only New Hampshire having gone up with their out-of-district costs in the area of student services. So as Massachusetts, they have matched that and actually gone a little bit further with their percentages. So double-digit, twelve to fourteen percent increases across there. And so those numbers are already high. And obviously, different placements, we've gone as, since the pandemic from twelve out-of-district placements to seventeen out-of-district placements. There are different reasons. We're not going to go into detail as to why these reasons are, are what they are. That's a lot of money that is continuing to be filtered out for the betterment of children. It is the, it is the right thing to do, but you'll see that a couple of the conversations we have here is about building some internal supports and programming so that we stop that pattern and then also get to the point of bringing people back into the district possibly as well, but definitely stopping what is clearly something that appears to continue going forward and it, and it matches what other schools are dealing with as well. So I have no reason to believe that it's going to stop, especially with social emotional issues in the early childhood areas. You know, we, we need to build some programming to be more sustainable and I believe to also help provide our kids with the appropriate schooling in their own community, which is important for us and for them. You can see here, the default budget would be just under thirty million. There are increases here due to JREA contract, JRSSACBA as well. Really, the bigger out of those two is the JREA contract. In last budget, we had the proposed budget. You'll see some graphs in a little while and you'll see a big gap. What's not in that proposed budget are the JREA, the, the contractual costs. So in this budget, what you end up getting because that contract passed is you get the first year of that contract. Plus, we are putting the second year of that contract in. So there are two years of the contract that make this number larger and in a jump than in prior years. The other piece that is a factor for this year is that we had an HVAC project, so we started that. So there's a certain amount of money, roughly the same as one year of the JREA contracts that would be added to that as well. So with those items right there, you're talking over one point two million, that would be automatically increased. And certainly because it was voted upon and because of legals, the legal reasons that would be put into default budget. There are not all, but we have been able to put many of the utilities, transportation and food services costs due to inflation into the default. There are still some that we cannot by law do, so there, we're still underneath what we would need. Certainly, this past year, you know, we had to go further, cut further. The reason why we cut seven individuals is out of the, or the equivalent of seven individuals, eight individuals was because we knew at that point in time that going, I think it was like five hundred thousand dollars roughly would have gotten us from the proposed to the default at that time. We knew at that point we need to go a quarter of a million more to deal with inflation. And so we have our numbers, we predicted pretty well, we're we're, we're making, we're making it work for, for this year again, due to the creativity of our, of our teachers. There are a few decreases, but those are minor. Certainly, we have some health insurance costs increases, dental insurance costs increases, lane changes, things of that nature. Really, we're very fortunate again because this school district and this school board over the past several years has been planning for the future. It's almost impossible, although we have data where we have actually gone backwards in our budgets over these past several years. It's impossible to continue to do that, but it is possible to slow that increase down. And so through negotiations, our health insurance has time and time again, while there have been increases of two percent or three percent, those are lower increases than what the average and certainly what the high ends are for these healthcare plans. And they're great healthcare plans, but through, through very cooperative negotiations, it's benefited this district continuously in the tune of millions, quite frankly, over the past eight years. Moving to the next slide. You can see that it's the same information on the bottom, just that's the default. And then, of course, what is being proposed as of tonight, thirty-six, sixty-one, seven thirty-three. Now, the general fund is the number that you're most interested in typically because that's the number that is raised and appropriated. The other funds are special revenues and food service, get added to that. Grants, things of that nature. So that would be that, and, and I didn't want to make a graph that made this less than what the reality is. So I made sure to knock off the bottom twenty million. It's a, it's a increase. It was an increase from the previous year to, you know, this year in our spending and it's another big increase. I've explained a few of those increases. Again, one point two to one point five million has to do with some warrant articles that were passed last year. That goes into the, that automatically goes into the next year. And the matters of continued inflation with facilities, the continued inflation with some supplies, that's not that big comparatively speaking. And another half a million to seven hundred thousand, we're going on the low end right now, but of further out of district placements and so, and other, and other support services needs such as psychological services that are required and so forth. We have some people who are leaving and retiring. We need to bring them back in. If we could, it would be cheaper if we could find people to actually be school psychologists to work for the district. Our pay scale does not come close to what the market value is in that area. So it's about, we are fortunate to have very good relationships with certain partners to be able to acquire those services. We literally bid against other districts to get the services that we need and are legally required to provide both in speech and, and certainly some, sometimes, sometimes OTPT, that's occupational therapy and physical therapy services, but also certainly psychological services. And you have to have some of that's testing, some of that's, that's more of counseling support. All of that having to do with special education, individual education plans, legal requirements. This is the number, again, with the food services, just a picture of what the previous slide was, and we go to the next one, which is just a picture of that without that, these, this is the general fund. Again, the general fund is what usually most people are interested in kind of knowing that number, what that number is. If we go to the next slide. There's been a change in, there's been another pattern change. This this speaks to items other than personnel starting to cost more than what we've been spending over the past, my time here. Every year, we have had that graph be seventy-five to eighty percent personnel costs, and then the rest, the slight, the other slice was reduced. Those, that twenty-nine percent now, so is, is now taking over some of those personnel costs. That twenty-nine percent is, is keeping the buildings running. These are older buildings. They are, they, they require probably more work than, than really what we're even putting forward in this budget or other warrant articles, but we do have some future planning. We can keep on maintaining. When we do do some work, we try to do it right. We have had almost every circumstance where we've done work, and John could talk about this. We do have other people here who can answer questions about anything that, that you really want to know. Past the, the past work may, may not have been done the way it needed to be done to have more longevity. And so that's a nice way of saying we're, we're fixing things and we're fixing them right, which is good. It does cost though because things are more expensive now than they were twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, ten years ago, five years ago, two years ago. Although in the last two to three years, things have been getting done very well with whatever money we've had. Continue on. These just spell out some of the notable changes. I've talked about some of them, technology needs now. Money, there's actually more technology needs than that. So during this last board meeting, there were some conversations. The board decided to pre-purchase some funds, well, sorry, pre-purchase some technology. I say pre-purchase because it's really not completely a pre-purchase because we, as a result of having default, tried to go without technology increases. This, our, our usual pattern of, of purchase for this year, that has been problematic. We have run into problems. We have run into problems and they are of a significant nature and they will harm um. Our uh assessments and everything else and and certainly learning opportunities as well. Because so much is done now through a technological uh approach. Um fortunately, we're not talking laptops, I know the paper said laptops, we we're not purchasing laptops for students, that would be very expensive. Chromebooks are a lot less expensive, they do what we need them to do and it's very helpful. So the the board has taken away from our original conversations, another hundred seventy-five thousand out of that. To be able to this year use someone assigned fund balance money to purchase those. And so that's in the works, we have the permission to do so. Also, um they that that they they uh had gave us the permission to also. Um take some other items such as floor machines, scrubbers, we have some that are end of life. Uh cleaning equipment, building equipment, doors at different schools that need to be fixed to be done this year. As opposed to putting it into the budget for next year, so that um. If you had come to a previous iteration of this, you would have seen that number that we were proposing higher. By about three hundred fifty to three hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um those are needs, we can't. Go without those. Uh transportation increases, we're in the second year of a five-year contract, again, it. It's frustrating, um we've. If you've been part of that our board meetings over the last two years, we've shown you the graphs that we have this this board. Um members who are on the board now, members who are here actually in this room who were on the board before. Made really critically important decisions to continue to just stay with our bus company and we. Benefited financially significantly. We are still, even though our numbers are going up now to because of the selling, this this company now has been sold twice. But we were able to lock in while, even though there were increases, we are still nowhere near what the average market is right now. Um granted, fuel costs. Are are, you know, are difficult and we don't have fuel costs within our contract, so um that's difficult. But that still continues to increase, special education, we talked about that, I don't want to belabor that um. Right here, I will ta- I will mention a couple items here. Uh in this budget, there is no. Uh increase that is really being put forward for the middle school, high school, even though they decreased last year. They're saying let's stay as is, um we can continue to improve on what we're doing, we're not asking for anything further. Our elementary schools as as predicted um have had a lot of social difficulties. Um it ebbs and flows as to where it is, it's typically with younger individuals. That is um what what we're seeing across the nation, what we're seeing across the states, certainly. Um what we're seeing to some degree here that those, let's let's just pick a number, um let's say five. Five individuals within a school this, school our size can, not only is it impacting them, not only impacting the adults. Not as sometimes creating an unsafe environment if we don't have the right personnel and the right supports. Um they go out of district, perhaps if that's the case, if if the school can't provide the services that's on need, but it is also. Harmful to the learning of the rest of the population. Um we are certainly doing some great work with our, uh if you were. Just before this, we had the education committee and that committee talked about something called M T S S B. Which is a multi-tiered system of support and behavior, what at wellness. That's systemizing our approach to work with learners, providing them the best environment possible. And that there's a lot of work that is entailed there, we're making some great progress, that being the case, they have some pretty hefty needs. Um our special, our student services over at the S A U are not only doing their jobs here, which is a full-time job. And because the legal requirements for their paperwork and so forth keep on going and going and going. Uh they are also in the schools consistently, constantly substituting, dealing, uh helping with behavior problems and so forth. They're doing very large jobs and people are burning out. Um and and we don't want to see that happen, we want to continue our progress and so. You'll see there, the new program for at uh J G L, Jet, J G S, Jaffrey Grade School. It would actually be for both elementary schools, but it would be housed at J G S. Um would require forty thousand for a new instructional associate, that includes salary and benefits. I recommend, we do not remove that at any point in time. That would, I think that would be short sighted, this is an investment for the future. We have other personnel already within the district that we can move around to be um in that teaching. Uh or at least we have the positions within the district that we can move around for the teaching purposes of that. This, we have the psychological services part for that. Um another piece of that we had talked about was having an elementary assistant principal at both locations. But one being specifically focused on special education with an emphasis on behavioral expertise. Um perhaps alternative programming, early childhood, what have you for asking for the world here. Um and then um someone to help with the pre-K and out of district because the out of district increase, that is a lot of time, uh coordinator. Now. We've met with some. People in the community, we've had conversations here. And uh. Internally, we have gone back to the table. Uh with the feedback that has been, that has come to us, we know this budget is is uh a tough number. These are absolute needs, no one is asking for anything that is not needed. There, I am recommending, um and it's up to you for discussion and choice. But it's, but it's the recommendation is contingent upon um what I'm about to say. I think we can address the elementary assistant principal. Not putting an assistant principal in place, but a but a elementary special education behavioral administrator. In that elementary school. Take care of the pre-K. Piece of it. Keep the out of district placement within the S A U. Because in theory, they will not be running to the schools. By taking our um. S A U position, district position of inclusion coordinator. Who has. These requirements, who has been leading the M T S S B effort, we need to continue having that, we cannot lose that. We can. We can eliminate. The S A U position and turn it into one that will take care of. Um well, with the cooperation of the uh secondary schools. So that they take on the portions of that positions roles, which they have agreed to do. And um. With some other work we'd have to do with the job description. Um we can eliminate those bottom two bullets. Which would be a quarter of a million. So I would ask that we would drop our asking number by a quarter of a million. And make that move. Um or begin to make that move. Uh if we do that, we can even start the transition. Earlier, to be able to make sure that um. You know, relationships are built, that systems are built, um this and 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 teachers are supported. Um it basically would take a district-wide position, eliminate the secondary aspect of it completely, we have. Those, those elements will be picked up by existing staff in dispersed within the. Uh administration of the uh secondary school. Um and. They'll, they would become solely elementary focused and in the buildings. Yes.
So Ruben, are you recommending then that we make an adjustment? And fill the role. Of the s- second assistant principal using.
I am not saying we call it an assistant principal, I think the functionality of that and the certification needs to be for that. Um but it's important as we have. Any anytime we make some significant adjustments and changes, we need to make sure there's flexibility involved. When we went to one principal here, we made sure that the two assistant principals remaining had specialties. And they had, that they were focused in specific areas so that certain jobs would not fall off the plate. That has been successful, we are making a lot of really great progress here. We need to make certain that we're giving the flexibility to the staff. We can call it assistant principal if you wanted to of inclusion and and student services if you wanted. Um I, the name doesn't matter to me, the functionality is going to be similar anyway. We're taking a person who will have that certification, has an early child or at the capacity to have early childhood certification, has a special ed certification. Is running the district's effort on uh behavior and system support, putting it entirely into where it's needed most. And it doesn't with. With other areas of the budget that are increased for uh cost of living expenses and stuff like that, it's already included. We can, we can deal with salaries and so forth, I am, as a result of that, saying. Those bottom two points, if you want to round up to two fifty. Um and as a quarter of a million. I would say remove the quarter of a million from, that is my recommendation. It takes into consideration, I I want to say publicly, I appreciate so much. Uh Lisa, for making the motion to keep these items included. Um because she is absolutely correct, they are absolutely necessary. We, we believe through conversation with student services, through conversation with the administration at the middle school, high school. Through the conversations with the administration at the elementary schools. Through. Conversations with the individual. Um that this impacts probably the most. Um this is something they believe in what we're doing as a school district, they believe in our kids, they believe we want to continue to move forward. If this helps us to uh get to where we need to be from a financial standpoint a little bit. Uh to show that we're we're trying here. A default budget would be devastating. Two years in a row. For for a lot of reasons. If we go to the next notable change, so yes, to answer your question, I'm recommending we do that.
Wow.
Um. Other changes, facilities, that number one seventy, it was one forty at one time, it was one seventy, I think, you know, it it fluctuates. It could be up to one ninety at this point in time, um it just keeps changing, but facilities, utilities are just are going up and down. Um yes.
Based on the requirement to provide a safe and. Healthy learning environment, can the utility increases be part of the default budget?
Yeah, the based upon that, the majority of these costs are within that default budget, yes.
And does that also hold for uh fuel for transportation, simply have to provide transportation?
Uh partway, yes, Carrie, actually, could you talk about those other things that we we were able to put in, there's some of that. But by the letter, we could not include into the default. Um but like we actually drove certain routes to look at the safety of them. And whether they had sidewalks and so forth because of the definitions of one mile, two miles and so forth. To find out what our routes were so that we can include whatever we could, yes.
It's basically the transportation that is required by law. Um I calculated the fuel based on what's required by law into the default budget. Transportation that's not required by law, such as field trips. Were not any fuel for those transportation expenditures are not in the default budget. And and this refers to utility increases. But aren't those, can't those be covered in the default budget?
Some of these costs are in the default budget that I'm listing here and some some are not, so a lot of these costs are in the default budget, the facilities. Um S A U costs, how much of that would be, would you say would be in the default budget out of that uh amount, I think some of it can't be.
Well, the transportation. Is a hundred fifty-three thousand. Um that, those are the costs that we add to the fault, but one fifty-three oh six.
Okay, so most of them are HVAC leases in the default, J R E A, year two of two and year one of two. Is in this as well. Um health insurance for those bargained units is in the default, as for non-bargained units, it would not be in the default. Um S A U exempt and non-exempt salaries of which that position that we just talked about, some of that would be going and being taken out of. Excuse me, permanent substitutes, we had originally asked for. For new permanent substitutes uh. I'm not going to go into why, because uh there there's a reason why and and we still have that need. But we did try, we did increase substitute rates, so we said, let's give it a year. Let's not put in another two hundred thousand dollars for that sort of thing, let's just raise it by the sixty thousand that we think. It would be based upon um the increase in subrates, which we're still, we're comparable now to other districts, which is good. And um I don't know as though it's increased our capacity to get people, but maybe one or two, that's been helpful. Um our permanent subs have been very, very helpful that we do have in our, in our district when we um we put those in. Food service, uh we, we're in a. Year of going out to bid. Um food service costs continue to increase. Um we actually, Carrie, have we sent that? Oh, I think next week, the bid uh information into the paper and so forth.
The ad.
Yeah.
Should be going in the paper next week, I need to touch base with Nick about that, and I sent him the. Bid to post on the website earlier today.
So that's, that's a thing that we need to do, you know, we're exploring a lot of different options in that area. Uh but there, there's a lot of decisions that need to be made and one of them is to get, gather all the information we possibly can first. Which is going out to bid for uh food service. Um last year, we had an interesting increase in our food service costs without a whole lot of explanation. It 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 was what it was and we we absorbed it. Um we do need a freezer, that's not in the default. Um at RMS. Fun fact, not really part of this budget. Um uh several uh Taylor, you may have received an email from me. So we uh we did just a little while ago, uh we have, you know, we have some aging facilities and uh and so part of the. Uh house bill, I don't know, I think it was eleven forty-one, but a house bill having to do this year with uh the lead testing and so forth. Which we've done before, we we've fixed anything, all our drinking areas are are fine. Um but we do have a lot of faucets that uh test higher, so we are going to do some testing and we've obviously put things off limits and. Um we can um at some point, we'll do some filtration and all that. But we do want to actually find out what the root cause is over at RMS in particular, um because of the number of. Of areas where, again, they're not, no one's drinking out of those areas, but it's, it's concerning. Is it the pipes, are they the fixtures, is it the source coming into the building? It's important information for, I think, town and taxpayers to know, so we're going to explore that. That is the information I'll present tonight um. On that, if you have any questions, we do have myself as well as I have Carrie, the the business administrator. The um and we have. The facilities director over there, John, we have the director of student services, Jen, right next to him. Uh we have our elementary principals, uh we've talked about the elementary schools a lot, we have those uh here as well. Um and uh we have plenty of sources. That can answer questions.
Nick, did you had a question or a comment, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that uh David Dustin is also here remotely, so he can answer questions about the middle high school as the principal. And uh Kim O'Coin, school board member, has joined us remotely. Um happened partway through the uh just the budget discussion, so she is officially here remotely and should be. Attempted to be included in on any votes or discussions going forward.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so. We've now had Ruben's presentation on the budget. For budget proposal for the next year, this is obviously a core piece of what we're here for tonight. So. This is a time for questions from the public. Of the board, yes, Taylor.
Testing.
Hi, Taylor Radcliffe, and I live in Ridge. Just to your um. Kind of compromise on the specialists, you talked about. Taking the inclusion, the current inclusion specialist who works district-wide um. And transferring him away from the high school to provide just the elementary school services, so my question would be. What was he doing with the secondary? And which individual? And which individuals, not specific people, but positions. Um, are supporting or advocating for that removal of support from particularly. Um, social, emotional, behavioral, um, whatever pieces he was able to, because. Think that's an important thing to know about what, what would be leaving as part of that plan.
No, that's a, that's a great question, uh, truancy is going to have to be completely within that whole process, uh, he. During COVID designed the entire process for this district and then implemented it and followed through, so there's the whole legal process of that. When there's truancy, and of course, that unfortunately happens a little bit more within the secondary level than it does in other uh parts of the district. So that's going to have to be taken up between some of the administration of the school, so I won't name a specific uh area, but because they have to decide, but they have. Um, a couple of different uh locations they could go, um, positions they could take. The social emotional, so the coordinator, the uh inclusion coordinator. Um, leads the district wide effort for. A consistent system across the entire district of, uh, I'll just say behavior supports and processes. Uh, we know that when behavior is, is going well and culture is good in the school. Then learning increases and people feel safe, it is actually has more to do with safety, I need an hour to hit it almost anything. The systems and the work that he's doing um has not been done in isolation. So we believe that decision making needs to not happen at this level so much as we are resources to help other people build. Capacity and make decisions, he meets with various groups from the schools, he meets with guidance here, that's the core. Place he meets right now at this particular school um to help build the programming. Um, they did a presentation tonight on kind of uh a rubric of where they feel they are right now, some places we're making good progress, others. You know, we need to do better, um, and we expect that this implementation will take another three years really to systematize and be part of the culture. So, that piece would be taken over through guidance. They're the ones who know what's going on, they, it's also a logical place. It is also a place we've, I wouldn't say we've incre- we've increased guidance, I think we've needed to. We've done it by trading off positions, we've not increased the budget ever by increasing those positions, but those, that's an area that the, that needs have shifted. And so they would be the ones to take over that area, and they do have a pretty decent, they have a good, they have a high level of expertise. It would be several people that would have to be involved in kind of making sure that that's running throughout the entire school. But um, this school is a little ahead of the game in its philosophy around discipline and behavior. Um, really, actually, probably one of the uh leaders in the entire state right now, as they uh have been asked for some of their. Uh, documents to be used for state level things, um. And they have a desire to make sure that they're moving closer and closer to that restorative type of approach, which, you know, we're doing in part. It's takes a lot of work to do that, so that's where they would end up. Yes.
Barb Kaufman from Ringe. Um, so he had mentioned guidance and the inclusion person leaving. And going to the elementary school, which absolutely you need help in the elementary school, because when they get to the high school, you don't want those issues. But you have a director of counseling. That in my children's lifetime never happened and a five oh four wellness coordinator. And in the paper you had stated that, and I might have gotten this wrong, that, you know, if we fall to the default budget. Teaching positions might have to be. You know. Put aside, but your whole district um idea here mentions teachers at least nine times. I'm curious about a couple of things, why we need a director of counseling when we haven't before and the numbers for schools are down. Um, and a five oh four wellness coordinator. And if you're taking these people from the high school, will those high school school counselors be overwhelmed because. They still have a lot to do, trying to make sure students get. The classes they need, the recommendations they need, and the things that just go on day to day.
Yeah, so the needs have changed within the secondary um level, and you're right, there's a different level of guidance at the school than what. Has been in the past, we traded off. Uh, through student services, said, you know, we need to make sure that we're providing these supports that were for a few to all individuals, and so we through the. Through the years, um, have changed up the positions, again, we have uh not added positions. Um, from a standpoint of like, oh, just new positions, we've removed in the past. We've removed positions to be able to get those, okay? The um director of, the guidance director is one of those individuals, we had a lot of need. Um, for our guidance uh supports, our behavior supports. This is an individual who would be doing some of the work that we're talking about if uh we. Decreased this by a quarter of a million. Um, that that individual is uh. Making certain and and actually building right now our uh our guidance system to be able to better support all of our learners. Um, I would say that the school district had a long way to go. In the past, in doing what was right for kids, um, our. And yes, we do have guidance counselors who um ha- have to deal with, do a lot of work with a lot of kids, and we need them to do that. This director um provides all the support for those individuals. Um, the five oh four uh wellness coordinator, we have an individual who, well, that person actually is, is a teacher. Um, so uh that individual oversees an area that, again. Went when I came here was not being done. Oh, I will, I won't even say properly, so it wasn't being um overseen, five oh four. Um, i- is different than special, uh, different than IDEA, different than special education. It is equally as legal and important for the district to um make sure that that is done properly. And so five oh four has a lot to do with access, so if individuals who have disabilities, physical disabilities or what have you. We need, whether it be uh supports or modi- or accommodations during the school day to. Or different schedules and so forth, those have to be monitored, there have to be meetings that uh take place, they have to be re-upped, it should be every year. Um, person works with a nurse, because some of these, a lot of these five oh four uh situations involve medical. Um, supports, medical supports within schools have increased significantly, whether it be seizure, be uh disorders. Uh, medications, um. Uh, obviously, a lot of um. Diabetes is, is, you can read about that, but that's an increase that certainly has happened with our population as well. And so that's all within five oh four, that person's making sure it's all taking place and happening, um, it's. One, making sure those kids get what they're needing, uh, two, also making sure the school district is doing its legal obligation. Which is a cost protection, that's not why we do it per se, but that is the outcome.
Alicia.
Alicia Sanderson from Ringe, um, could you scroll down, Nick? To the section where you're discussing adding the quarter of million, a quarter of million dollars that we're talking about. Little bit more, okay. So, prior to your discussion of this slide, Ruben, um, you had had mentioned burnout being a very. Um, present reality for many of the staff in our district. Um, and yet, we're sitting here right now considering taking. One person and making them responsible realistically for the work of three positions. Um, so I just question. I question the impact that that has for our staff. Um. And how burnout is a very real possibility, not only for that person, but also for the. The other staff who are taking on the additional roles and responsibilities that. That they have to with this kind of squishing together of three jobs into one. Um. And when our staff are feeling burnt out, we know that that affects our children. Um. I guess I wonder if there is another solution, if the board feels strongly that. Additional money does need to be cut, is there another way to do that? Can you keep the MTSSB person intact? And perhaps combine these two additional positions that you're looking at into one, it's not the same quarter of a million dollars, but it's something. Um. I guess I'd just like to see some more creative thinking, um, before we. Put our staff in a position to be burnt out, um, thereby affecting our students.
Well, I can appreciate that, I don't know if anyone wants to, else wants to speak to. That at all.
I'm happy to.
Because part of it would, um. I mean, there's a couple, a couple items I'll say is that the individual would still be in charge of the MTSSB, we focus on the elementary schools. That's a key piece of that. That there would have to be some um collaboration with the uh ex. The administration, of course, this is increasing the administration at the elementary, it's, it's making sure that there's a body in those schools all the time where there was not now. That's the, the burnout, um, I think, is in two p- two parts. One, not having those extra supports within the school, so in this, if this adds that, that helps other areas not burn out. We do also have behaviors, other behavior supports inside the elementary schools and so forth, that we do have that. Um, but there is more needed, you're right. The burnout element that we were really talking about, especially why we were going to put that pre-K and out of district coordinator in there. Is the SAU student services that were, that have been going in and doing. A lot of that work this year and and last year, and it doesn't seem to be like a pattern, a pattern was kind of forming. Um, and we're not interested in losing our momentum or our personnel that really know what it is we're doing, but Jen uh has. Really works with all those individuals, and we've had a lot of conversation about this. Uh, so I'd want her to be as honest, you know, to be honest, if she, if it changes, you know, okay, it's fine.
I, I appreciate that, Alicia, I think that, um. All of these, these things that we've asked for are, are things that. There's reasons that we're asking for these, that the burnout is a real thing, that it's, it's heavy and hard, we also are taxpayers. We also are parents, we also are very interested in doing what's best in a lot of different ways. And by being really collaborative and taking a little bit off of everybody's plate right now. Is a collaborative way to start. Um, not entirely sure that it will be enough and that things might need to continue to be collaborative, and what do we look at in the years to come? As we build programming, does that take other things off of other people's plates and move things around, and that's. That's constantly what, what this district does is, where are we, what our, what can our vision be, what can we do to move forward? Um, and this is a, a collaborative effort to take some off of everyone, so that everyone can, can do a little bit more.
It's a step. Sometimes, uh, the way I would look at it, another way of, of looking at it from the purely, really purely the um. Perspective of budgets and taxation and so forth. We have a default budget this year. Um, a second default budget would be very, very difficult for a lot of reasons. If one of those reasons uh just is, is not even just about, um, you know, loss of personnel, wherever those personnel would. Would be, you know, we'd have to reduce from, because that's where the bulk of the money is, has to be personnel. That, of course, then has a pattern of changing uh what we offer our kids, whether if it's here. We, it certainly changes the dynamics at the elementary schools, if you're talking about increased class sizes, things of that nature. Um, it also, I think, a, a bigger, a bigger piece than any of that. Is the reputation of the community and the school district. We already know that being one of two. Re-originally with Croydon, but that changed to districts in the state going on a default budget last year. That individuals who had been interested in coming our way. Chose not to because they felt that there was, even though they weren't happy necessarily where they were, and they liked a lot of things that were happening. It was voiced to the administrators that they weren't applying to the positions because of that, two years in a row. Gets is, is close to pattern um development, and that shows the immediate region, which of course is where you're getting your. Your staffing from, for the most part, it shows the immediate region that there's instability there, and I don't know if I can go there, because I don't know if I have my job the next year. Um, so that's not something you want to be either, reputation matters, and so, um, and it's, and it's worth a lot. Uh, so, and we've worked on that reputation. For a, a long time, and we're, and we're in a very good spot, we're in a very good spot in the state, I had a very good, you know, I had a good time this after, this morning going to Concord. And talking about the beautiful things that Jeffrey Ringe is doing to the state board of education. You know, I, me personally have been recognized, but that's not up, that's not about me, it's about. All of these people, these people have worked together to build phenomenal systems and are continuing to move forward. Um, we have to do it in a way that's also going to be fiscally a- as res- as helpful to the community as possible. Taxation and the way that our state chooses to. Fund public education is absolutely ludicrous. Um, it's not done this way anywhere, we are, um, it's, it's, it's not at all respectful to people who own homes. But it is how New Hampshire does it. It's what we have, we've shown a pattern of being below the state per cost per pupil. I think we can continue to go do that. We're just trying to find, we're trying to find out, we're, how we, we're trying to take everyone's needs into consideration, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act.
I guess before the next person speaks, if I could just make a note. Um, obviously, we've been having a lot of people speaking uh physically here at the meeting. Um, this meeting also, people who are online do have the ability to uh chime in if they so wish. Um, that can be done by using the uh hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen. You press that, I get a little notification, we can put you in a queue, and then once we get a couple people, we can switch over to uh. The digital audience and kind of switch back, uh, switch back and forth, just to make sure everybody's able to, you know, get a voice at the hearing.
Good, thank you, Nick.
Hi, Jack Beltate, um, selectman at Jabber, uh, Nick, can you back up? Please.
Uh, where is that?
Uh, no, one more up. Oh, yeah, just. Budget history approved general funds. Um, twenty two, twenty, I don't understand that number based on the, the two numbers.
Did I ask a lot of? No, I didn't.
Approved general fund, the differential between, um. What, what, why is that such a big difference in twenty two, twenty, uh, two thousand twenty two, twenty three and twenty four, where we're at, I don't, what, what? I don't understand those two numbers. Yeah.
So, the diff- the, I mean, a good portion of that difference is in that twenty two, twenty three. Uh, approved, it's not the uh, in, Carrie, correct me if I ever get the. The language incorrect, is not the adopted budget, so the approved warrant article, because we're, we're talking about the warrant article itself. Um, that number does not include the contract costs for the teachers. And so which, that green bar, that includes two years of contract. That includes two years of contract costs of the teachers and that's. That's close, that's about nine hundred thousand dollars right there. You also, that blue number does not include the four hun, well, almost four hundred thousand dollars. That we pay annually until the bond is done or the lease is done on the HVAC system as well, so that wouldn't have been. In that blue line either, because that was a separate warrant article. And so that now is put into that, so that's, that's half your distance and then there's just. Rising costs and everything else, there are, everything else being, yes, other personnel, because JREA, for instance, was the contract. Good contract that was negotiated during that timeframe. There are other groups of individuals, there's the JRSSA. Some of that money, sixty thousand of it wasn't in that because we needed to address custodians last year. So we did a one-year type of warrant on that one, people at the delivery session actually asked to put more money into that. We could not because that was a bargaining situation, we have done another negotiation, we will look at that later on. But those are the items, those are the big items that. That stand out and then a lot of small things that are just cost increases, like I said, if you go down to the after. Not this one, but the next one, next slide, no, 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 sorry, the circle, the pie graph. You can see that, that twenty-nine percent, again in years past, that was twenty-five percent maybe. But anywhere between twenty and twenty-five percent, so that, that non-personnel, those non-personnel costs have increased as well.
Does that answer your question?
No, no. But that's all right, that, the, that slide does not. Deceptive or whatever. When you look at, look at it from my perspective, the. Budget increases like eleven, twelve percent and that's not really what's happening, so that's, that's not a very. Productive slide to show people that where we're at.
Since the voters approved. Those two warrant articles, couldn't you show them as like a different color on top of the twenty-five million blue bar?
Yeah, no, we can, we can show the adopted, we, we can add another slide, we can put it on the same one, absolutely, that's perfectly fine.
Default, we're, we're talking about budgets now, we're talking about money.
Yeah.
From, from July first, two thousand twenty-two through, excuse me, twenty-three through July. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, we're talking about money, six months. You know, next year, because our budget starts July first on, on the school. We don't have it, I mean, we don't, last year, what was the unencumbered fund balance that went back to the town? I don't know, you know what it was? Do we know what approximately what it was?
That went back to the town, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. There was the retirement one. You're talking about the retirement money?
No, no, no.
That you didn't spend, it ended up going back to each community.
They got returned to the taxpayers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this past year was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
And we say this. I think you're asking, what you're asking really is. So to, you're, well, you're asking, I know what you're asking, but. The issue is that we, the board carried over a higher percentage. Of the unassigned fund balance than it had in previous years, it used to carry over two. Well, but, but if it didn't carry it over, it would have been returned and so we've had a, a pattern of returning. Between five hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
At the end of almost every single year over, at least during my time here that we've been here, last year was the first year that we did under a hundred. Well, under that amount, but it's, we had about half a million, am I correct? After, after all, the revenue came in like in August and we were able to finally close the books.
Well, we had, we had about eight, I want to say around eight hundred and eighty thousand. That we had retained from the prior year that was part of our unassigned fund balance. And then the board voted to retain nine hundred and one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars this past year. But as I said, about eight hundred and eighty somewhat thousand was from the prior year's carryover, basically.
Okay.
And that netted in the hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar return to the taxpayers, because that's what we had left after that.
We also returned what to the taxpayers this year with that, the funds that came our way, which. It was an amount, one, the hundred twelve thousand, we, we accepted.
You're talking about the New Hampshire retirement money?
Yes, how much was that? That also, we just, the board voted to. Return for, to offset taxation.
Couple of months ago.
That was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Yeah, so that was another thing that happened this year, so out of. Everything that we had, whether the retirement that was kicked back to us and the. Other money there, you're talking what, two hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
Divided by, by a portion.
Yes, yes.
Divided as per portion and student population.
Right.
Well, it, right, yeah.
Okay, all right, so obviously. You're in a default budget this year, which is approximately twenty-nine million, six hundred thousand dollars. Not what it was. But would be a little less than that because this twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, excuse me, twenty-nine million, six hundred thousand includes. Contractual requirements increases that are been contractually agreed upon previously, correct? So the current default budget. For the current year ending this coming. June is. Twenty-nine thou, two, twenty-nine million dollars there.
Can you go to page nine on the slides? I think that's the slide that might have the information you're looking for. Yeah, that one. Nope, the, the matrix, yep. That one shows the two thousand twenty-two, twenty, it's on the bottom part. On the two thousand. Twenty-two, twenty-three. Yeah, that's the adop, that's the adopted budget, that's the one with everything in it, yes.
Right now through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Well, can I add something to that? So that does not include. Warrant articles that you would repeat in the subsequent year, such as the trust fund warrant articles, so. When you're looking at the twenty-seven, nine, nine, three. Oh, eighty, that doesn't include the. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we also had, that was approved warrant articles from last year. That we put into trust funds.
Yeah, that's just your article one.
That, well, it's article one, it's also the any collective bargaining agreement warrant articles and it's the lease. For the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget number. For the twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget number.
Because now you're talking the adopted, that's the adopted one, that's higher than the, the other graphs of the approved. The approved is just the warrant, we were just, because we were talking about warrant article one, yeah, okay.
That's not a good, that's, that's a, not a good.
We'll change it up and we'll change it up.
It doesn't come out.
Yeah.
It's, it looks like you've got a bigger increase than what you, what you're doing this, so you're basically talking about. Twenty-eight million.
Twenty.
Twenty-eight million, three hundred, thereabouts.
Twenty-eight million, three sixty-eight, oh, eighty. Is what we're actually spending, that we're total, our total appropriations are.
Then for this year.
What was approved to spend, right, the total appropriations.
Okay, now, now I understand, so that's. So in the default of twenty-nine, six and change. Includes whatever contractual agreements or whatever are required, that have to be increased.
Yes.
Okay, that, that is, it just. It wasn't, I don't want it to be shown that it's.
Bigger than.
Just deceiving, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we also wanted to make sure that we were not trying to be deceptive in a different way of showing that. You know, like through, through changing the graphs, making it a small amount, we wanted to bring, we want to have the conversation. About the realities of funding too.
Kevin Chamberlain, Jeffrey. Is there anything different in this year's, in the number you're showing for the default budget for twenty-three, twenty-four? That you changed or that you found that you could include in the budget this year that you weren't including in last year's default number?
Yes.
Would approximately, how much is that money?
Sorry, I have a lot of files open. So we added transportation. In the amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, oh, sixty-nine and utilities for facilities and the amount of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. And increases to the food service program. A hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty.
So you're probably about six hundred.
Well, there's student services items that we contracted services that we added, that's also required by law. We've typically added student services.
That would have been in the current year, no?
We didn't realize we could put contracted services in default. So there was, there's some differences in that too, that we're able to support better.
So basically, the default number for this year. Is inflated by about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars over last year, that you found that you think. Include additional things that you weren't including in prior years.
Yes, it's, well, it's lower this year than it should have been, the default budget.
Correct, for the current year.
Correct.
Right. When we go to the slide that showed the. Slide you talked about possibly conceding a quarter of a million dollars.
Yes, did you hear that, Nick? That's the one.
So those last three bullet points under special ed. Those aren't included in default, but included in the post-operating, current, with the number that's been shared tonight.
Those last three bullet points are not.
Ruben?
Yeah.
Can I just mention, the forty thousand dollar. New instructional associate is not in the proposed budget. So if you're looking to eliminate the last two. You might want to reduce the amount. By that forty thousand, because that forty thousand is not in the proposed budget.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely want to make sure that forty thousand, that. I, I think if we don't build a program and spend that much now. These budget conversations are going to be that much down the road, I, that would be. I just don't think that would be bright to do. For the district to do, but those last two. The, the forty K is not, was, was not. Put in.
It was not, no, it was requested by Jen, but it was not in the budget.
Okay.
It works that way.
So that bringing the proposed operating budget. You kept everything the same, up forty thousand more than what the number is on that first, okay?
Yes.
And. Does that change the default number that you've shown?
No.
Okay. So if the default budget was, well. Voters approve. All three of these bullet points would go away, so you wouldn't have the funds to provide those services, correct?
That is correct.
But the five eighty-five that's shown there is built into.
That would be built into the default.
Technology not. But the technology is not in the default.
Well, I was, I was talking about special education, the technology of sixty thousand, that, that specific number is not the default now.
That's not the default, the default.
Alicia Stenderson, Ringe, so I guess I'm wondering if that, we'll have two questions. Is it too late to add that instructional associate to the proposed budget? My second question is, can you clarify the intent for that position would. Potentially help reduce the need for additional out-of-district placements, is that correct? Okay, can you please help me understand what the average cost of an out-of-district placement is currently?
So I don't know your answer, the answer to question number one, but I think, no, it's not too late, that's why we're having this conversation. Question number two, there are, part of this process is in a reallocation of a teaching position that we currently have in special ed. To move to build a behavior support, so we have an intensive cognitive behavior program at RMS. We would build an intensive behavior program like the house at JGS for both schools, the same as we do for the intensive cognitive program. By reallocating one of our current teaching positions and adding an additional associate to that one. The addition also requires some support of school psychologists and that, that aligns beautifully with. The inclusion special ed piece to build a program. The average cost of an out-of-district placement is about a hundred fifteen thousand dollars, so it can go. Eighty to five hundred thousand, frankly, so generally about a hundred fifteen to a hundred twenty. That's before the fourteen, twelve to fourteen percent increase, so right now that's what we're paying and that does not include transportation costs. Or additional fees for additional supports and services maybe such as occupational therapy or counseling or that type of service. Are often tacked on in addition.
So essentially, this program with that addition and the restructuring of current staff. Could prevent children from needing to be sent for an out-of-district placement. The lowest cost, that's eighty thousand dollars, whereas we can budget for forty thousand dollars and. Save ourselves that expense, so I just wanted to point that out.
Alicia. I mean, we have to build, we have to build the program.
Sure, but I mean, that could also result in further reductions of.
Your process to get the program to be in there, but. The. The outlook, the future outlook for the needs that. Our, our children have, and I say ours, it's not any different than what's happening all, all over the place. We have to think differently. Or else. Our, our, our little steep, our increase is going to be, is going to be this, absolutely.
We don't want to catch up the condom.
Well.
Sorry, could help.
Well, I'm sure they, they have some, their, their own challenges and difficulties.
Yeah, yeah. And Nick, did you have a?
Yeah, I don't have a person online, but I did just want to make a point that Kim's technology that she was accessing the meeting on has died. So she has left the meeting, so if she does come back, I'll lay at the board, but I just wanted to make that known that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Trey Horn from Ringe, just follow-up question on the moving of the inclusion coordinator to JGS. Am I correct in my understanding that to make that possible programming viable, including that forty thousand dollar position? At JGS, it requires there to be that strong behavioral support from an administration level at JGS. Do those go hand in hand or can we piecemeal that or are those a package deal?
It's a complimentary deal is what I would say. It, it strengthens. The capacity, the likelihood of programming to be successful in implementation. It was not part of the original design, but it certainly enhances it.
Thank you.
Well, yeah.
All right.
I have one question.
Yes.
What is the projected, where, where do you project you're going to come out at the end of the fiscal year? I can't. I would not feel comfortable. Giving you a projection at this time because we have a lot of expenses that haven't been encumbered yet. And we're still trying to shift money around to figure out how we're gonna pay for certain things.
There was one, I think, discussed on December nineteenth though.
I don't.
I don't.
And that's what, that's what's made, I thought this would make the board comfortable, making some of the purchases.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
I see. I think we had the conversation about would. Would there likely be? Some money left over that way to replenish.
Right.
That amount. And I think that. If you were to look at the numbers right now, the likelihood is there. But I think what Carrie's saying is that not all items have been encumbered. There are some hot, there are some, the reason why you have some money right now is because we had some difficult hire, difficulty hiring people. We are, we have just started to hire in. In pockets and so. I think that we'd be uncomfortable saying, giving you an, an exact amount or even kind of a rounded amount as to what that would be. But we certainly. Understand the desire and the, and perhaps the need to. Be able to make sure we have that. Five percent carried over because of, of. Unanticipated situations that may, may arise.
Okay, so are there any more comments or questions from the public? Contestant?
So just to understand your process, Ruben made a recommendation, at what point will the board discuss or deliberate that? So that you end up. When will your final number that will be held at the deliberative session be communicated to the public?
Kevin, I expect that we're gonna do that. As soon as the public has had all the opportunity. You know, desires. So in other words, soon.
Okay, so. Next week. You'll have your final numbers for the deliberative session or will you still have time to, will you be changing those numbers?
I anticipate that we're gonna have it tonight.
Tonight.
They have to be, yeah.
Right.
I would urge the board to, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to talk. I would urge the board to reconsider those items that Rubens. Proposed. I, I. Personally, I've been on the board, I've been sharing, I understand, been through the whole routine, I understand, I'm a selectman at this point. I understand this part of the thing, everything is a compromise. And I think it's really important. It came to me tonight a little bit that not have another default budget. Two default budgets in a row is gonna be. As, it'd be a hiring issue, now it becomes a. You know, a. It becomes a public image issue on, for the district. For the town, everything, so I. If we can get it down closer to where it is, I certainly will support it. But you're right.
I do have some more information for one of your questions, I, I wanted to find out some information for you. The five oh four coordinator has a caseload of seventy-four kids.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But.
Sorry. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to give you the information.
Right, seventy-four children throughout the district, which I totally under.
Throughout this.
Throughout the district.
Middle, high school.
Just the middle and high school, seventy-four on five oh fours, which I totally understand. My question, when I look at. The amount of administration that we seem to have built up in this district. And when I read in a paper that. The first thought is to. Lose teaching staff. I immediately go to, alright, but you've got a lot of administration. And if teachers are the mainstay of a district. Then to put out there that, well, we might have to cut them. As opposed to possibly looking at the administration. That, that bothers me, I also know that if you have a. District. Counselor, head of the counseling department. That in many school districts, five oh fours fall under that. So that was where my question was, and my concern is. The first thing we always seem to get rid of is teachers. Or support staff. Which decimates everything. And I always worry about. The administration getting bigger.
Sure.
And. The salaries for administration are slightly bigger.
Yeah. Their per diem salary is usually lower. But they're, because they're year round employees, they tend to be a little bit larger. The, what I, I will say, cause I think it's an important. Piece to that conversation, cause I agree with you entirely. You know, the administration numbers of this school have actually stayed pretty flat, they've, they've, they've been indifferent because we had, we did have that big. Semi controversial. Change from the two, two principals here to the one principal and so forth, we just have had different needs. The other factor, and this is part of our multi-year planning, and this is what, part of what I presented to the state Board of Education this morning. Is that our administrators function very, very differently? Than the traditional administration, so there's not one person hired here who doesn't go into the classrooms and support and provide professional development. And teach and so forth, I myself, I've taught some classes, I go in, I support, I provide professional development, we do that, we don't hire people who. Don't go in and do that type of work, it's essential that we're all on the same page. The other piece of it is our decision-making process rather than a traditional hierarchical system, which is. Typical for schools. While we still have elements of that, we're moving away from that to a teacher. And administrator joint. Collaborative decision-making process throughout this entire organization. There's another layer of that, which also is that those teamings would involve the decision-making of partners such as yourselves, such as. Franklin Pierce University, King State, these partners that we have, we're meeting with people. Right now and trying to partner, having to do with intergenerational supports for our schools and for the community. Because we want our school to be more than just a learning environment for our kids, we want it for, to be a community. Hub and a place where everyone can feel welcome, accepted and desired and wanted, so. I understand the, the mentality, I, the, the paper may have, may have said teaching staff, we're all, it may have been a. It's, we're all teaching, so we would, we would evaluate everything, there's certain paraprofessionals like support staff, we wouldn't legally be allowed to even. Reduce and right now, we don't have enough of them. We're understaffed in that area, we got a little creative, we actually, because I, this is, you may have this question in the back of your head. We had a decrease of multiple teaching positions, we didn't lose any people who wanted to be here, we, we had attrition. That, that helped us to be able to maintain the actual people, but we lost those seven positions last year. We, because we were not able to. Acquire the staffing that you're talking about, the support staff and so forth, which are highly essential. Jen. Got creative, started to develop, you know, trade, basically trade off positions, build and get more co-teaching going on. For special education, which is a research-based best practice, really hard model to implement. But we've had some success with that as well and we're still, still moving, but I mean, that's, so we have. You know, those teachers, we, I wouldn't say that we're. We're perfect with that.
I did, you know, you said that. You know, you're all in there, the chief financial officer, going to teach his classes.
Every person in this district goes and helps in different areas, does. Does Carrie tend to go over and teach classes? No, that is not the case, she's usually, you're, you're, you're right. But no, what, no, we, what we. I, I, we do have SAU office staff who do go in and substitute and take care of things at various levels, we're all in it together. We're all in an area of need. You know, I, I go over and work on some behavior sys, situations with varying children, I have a background that works, you know, that, that I, that I have a, that I can use for that. So. We do a lot of different things, we're a small district and we have to all wear many hats. But we're doing it for the betterment of our kids, for our community, we want them to thrive in their lives and community. And it takes all of us to do it and whatever it takes, that's what we do.
And in defense of the CFO. Before the start of the budget season, Carrie did do a education session for us as board members. Okay. I assume, Nick, that we don't have any questions from the. Online.
I don't have anybody yet, but just to offer it one more time again, if you want to use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen. That allows me to acknowledge you and then we do have a speaker in the room. But you can be heard, so if you want to do that, we could acknowledge you and you could make a public comment.
Okay, and then the, the, the public that's here. Everybody, I, I guess has had a chance to ask any questions that they, they have or make comments.
Thank you. Please change that slide because it looks devastating.
We'll change, we'll change the slide, it, it's so it's the opposite thinking that I had, I thought, let's make it. Be real, you know, in comparison for the, the warrant versus the warrant is what I was doing, okay. Alright, we can do that. So we'll use the adopted. Language, not the approved.
Okay, so. Now it's up to us as a board to. Approve the budget as presented or the. Or to make changes to it. Based on.
I will say, I, I do want that forty thousand. To be put in there and that was, I. That, I think that's important.
Charlie?
For sign of clarity.
Yeah.
Alright. What we're doing is we're going to move. The article two. To the official ballot. Unless we change article two. If we change article two, the only thing we're changing is. The bottom line. All the line items have already been voted on by the board. So what's being put forward in the Warren article is already gonna include by the board. So I don't think that we have the. Ability to go back and address individual line items. I think that what we need to do is look at the bottom line. And if we reduce the bottom line. Then it's up to the district to. Manage those line items. So I would make a motion. For the sake of argument, and sometimes I don't even get a second. I would make a motion to reduce the budget. By two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Okay. And making the new. Budget. Believe this is right, Carrie. Thirty-nine, four hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. Give me that number one more time.
I got it. That's, my math is wrong.
Three zero six six one, seven two three minus. Now you know.
While you're doing that math, can I ask a question of you Jen?
Yes.
That forty thousand, I went through our, all of our, the minutes that I could find. Was that what you had recommended taking out at that meeting we had in December? Remember there was an amount that you looked at and said, we can remove this?
No. Those were for. The things I said we could remove were things about. Materials, fire saves. And some other pieces, this was not this.
This not this, but this was not included in the budget. Numbers at this point.
Alright, Charlie, do you have your? Is that, is that calculation?
Thirty-six. Yes. Thirty thousand, three eighty.
Thirty million.
Excuse me, thirty million, three eighty-two, seven thirty-three.
Speak up Charlie, we can't hear you back, you're in the back row.
He was saying thirty million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-three is the number he's. Putting forward on the.
Before we go forward, can I ask for clarification Charlie, that is, your number includes the forty thousand that is not. In our budget number right now. Cause it looked to me it was when I did the mental math.
I'm just looking at a bottom line number. That we need to manage across the entire. Set of eighteen hundred and fifty line items. Okay. Where the money comes from is going to be up to the.
Alright, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Second, okay, thank you for us. Okay, so now we're at discussion and Carl.
The, to answer her question, it is in that because he's basically, it's being added forty-one oh four and one thirty-five. Comes to the two thirty-nine, but if the forty thousand isn't in the budget. Which I think it should be. You know. Basically it would have to be found somewhere else.
Right. Okay, Carl, thank you for that clarification, other questions from the board or? For the budget advisors?
I understand.
So I'm gonna ask a question of Ruben then. Ruben, you mentioned that forty thousand was important.
I'm sorry folks, it's hard for me to hear when some conversations happen.
So, so I'm gonna ask Ruben. Based on. Your awareness. That that forty thousand is important to. But that's not something you're looking to give up. Are you proposing? Or was your recommendation, sorry, I know you're not making a proposal, was your recommendation that a hundred and thirty-five thousand? Plus a hundred and four thousand is the amount of. The reduction in the bottom line.
Yeah, the original suggestion was one thirty-five plus the one oh four, which turns out to be like, you know, the one thirty-nine, I figured round up to two, you know, or sorry, two, two thirty-nine. Round up to two quarter of a million, I would, I would track the forty thousand from that if, now that that's not. In there, I, I. Wouldn't toy. I wouldn't toy with that because I don't. Or admit, or. That's what I'll say.
Okay. So we've got a, a motion from Charlie in a second. For a reduction of. In the bottom line of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, is that right? Okay. And we have a recommendation from. The superintendent for a number. Lower than that, about seventy thousand, lower than that. If I've got those numbers right, then. Question is, is there?
No, is deduction is one ninety-nine.
Yeah, okay. Well, right, right, I was going off his rounded up, look quarter millions, but you're right, you're right.
Yep, but Charlie's number was one ninety-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're. Okay, so Charlie can recommend to seventy-nine and people are operating under the.
And people are operating under the. Perception that the forty thousand dollars goes with that position. And we're not making that decision. What we're saying is we're reducing a thirty million dollar budget. By two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Which we should be able to, which we as a board should be able to manage. The difference between a twenty-nine thousand dollars difference between two fifty. And a two seventy-nine. And it's a um. Sixty, what is it? Sixty-nine million dollar difference, sixty-nine. Sixty-nine. Hundred thousand. No, sixty-nine. Sixty-nine thousand dollar difference. Alright, and I think we can manage that on a thirty million dollar budget. I'm sorry, but that's. What I think.
No, thank you, and thank you for that clarification. It sounds perfectly. Legitimate uh view, yes, Forbes.
I support this uh motion, um particularly because it's of the spirit of compromise. Which I think is very important. And uh if this helps. Uh to eliminate us going on a default budget. And which I really hope it does. I'm all in favor of this.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a? Historical question?
Yes.
Last year during the budget process. I'm not saying this to be difficult, but I am questioning this. Maybe questioning my memory, um. I believe that we made a large series of cuts. To get to what we thought was the most palatable. Number. And even cutting further than we thought. And then that budget number was not supported by the select people from either town. And. I just want to make sure I'm remembering that correctly, that we made all the, as many of the recommended cuts as we thought we could. And even still. Our proposed budget was not. Supported, is that, is that correct? Am I remembering?
My recollection is that we did cut uh somewhere that it was four hundred thousand dollars. I can't say that I've got the right number, but that's my recollection.
So we have to be careful. Thank you.
Uh any other questions or comments from the board? We've got a motion and a second, so. No. Saying done. Okay, um. Nick, I'm gonna assume that Kim is. Not online.
Nope. She's not made it back on.
Okay. So. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
And I wrote aye also. Hey. And I I believe that was six. Zero zero, am I correct? So that leaves our. Budget going forward at. Our proposed budget. Who's got the number for me?
Thirty million, there. Sorry, thirty million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three.
Seven hundred and thirty-three. Thank you, boss.
Just to make a, just a quick comment, I'd like to really thank the Lord. This is a sickening thing. We know we've cut. Last two years to try to get the budget. But the worst thing that we could do is have a conflicted number there with. The board saying that some of us agree to this budget, some of us don't before we go to the votes, that would be the worst. So I know how hard this is and I'm really grateful that this board chose to be unanimous in a very difficult. That I think showing the unity alone is gonna put a good message to the board.
Okay, um. Lisa, thank you for your comments. I have to admit, I have a little trouble hearing.
I've heard like half of anything here. I'll tell you, Liz.
Okay, but um. Okay, so that. Takes care of uh. Item, Article number two. And now we're on to Article three.
Did we, did we officially? Is that? Charlie's motion was to move the new number to the four, is that the way you're looking?
That's the way I'm looking at it. Do we need a separate vote to move it to the warrant?
Uh yeah, we need one to change it and one to. Move the amended ones.
Okay, so Christine, thank you for being heads up on that.
I'll make a motion. To that, I'll second.
And Daisy will second. Okay, so we have a motion to move it to the official ballot. And uh in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright, Article three, uh there is detail here. I'll try to be as. Quick as possible, um presented this the other night, board. Approved it going forward, uh it had been ratified prior to that by the. Jaffrey Ringe Support Staff Association. Um this was a. Long process, it was a good process. It was a very good process. And a lot of neat adjustments. Shall the school district vote to ratify the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Jaffrey Ridge Cooperative School District and the Jaffrey Ridge Support Staff Association? Which modifies the final year of the existing agreement and extends it in additional two years and calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits. To the amount previously approved by voters at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in prior fiscal year. You can see the numbers there. Um in front of you. Those numbers represent. Uh a five percent increase. Year after year. Um. And to further raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those. That would be paid at current staffing levels. Done a lot of work on this. Uh this is an area where we are understaffed significantly. And that is true in all, uh most, most school systems right now. Um certainly. Um our pay scales were out of line with with even retail. Um. And we've been trying to improve. We have dedicated people. These are the backbone uh that that what was stated before, teachers. These positions, all of them. Are custodians. Um maintenance. Paraprofessionals, backbone of this school district. These are the changes. We um modernized this by changing some of the language rather than calling people clerical aides, they are secretaries. Secretaries are administrative assistants. Instructional associates, which we've been using in this school district. A lot of places don't use that, um and a para educator is much more appropriate. To the work that they're doing. We've changed retirement benefits and what I mean by that is we phased out the the long-term costs that the district uh has to. Put into budgets here and there, like with these sick day buybacks um uh right now, it can accumulate a hundred. Um days of sick time and if they've been here a certain number of years, you pay them out a certain, you know, um an amount of money having to do with that, a percentage of that. Um that is going by the wayside uh at over a period of time, there's a a small phase out, but. The idea is that instead of doing that, and there's reasons for that, um one, if people are sick, we'd like them to stay home and not come in um. After these last several years, the other piece is that. Um. We, we want to have a contract that. Benefits all individuals. And by providing not large amounts, but some consistent four oh three B contributions that. Um supports them as they uh go and and plan for their retirement. It is. Long-term, a much better. Um item for the. Uh employees. It's a better advertisement and recruiting tool for us. It also um. Keeps our budgeting. Process very predictable. Um which is important where. Sometimes we can have ebbs and flows of a couple hundred thousand dollars here and there, like we actually do this year with our teachers association um. And like depends on who retires, right? So it uh causes uh an interesting conversation every budget season. Benefits, there's two extra holidays, uh they had one. So now they have three, the people who are school year employees. That helps significantly during the longer breaks around the holiday season that that we just had. Pants, uh. I put it on there because. It's, it's like, it's a really important thing. We had actually negotiated um putting with shirts and some sweatshirts and so forth, some apparel. Uh there, it's in uniform. It's, it's really great. Um. Pants are uh another factor that was important, and so we're gonna be providing pants to custodials, maintenance. Um. Find a way to make sure that that's done. That's a little bit harder with sizing and so forth. And then the pay scale, we changed this from an eighteen-step model. Uh with small increments in between, which weren't at all getting close to cost of living increases. And in some cases, actually, people who were off the chart were starting to make less than um and they had been here longer. This model. Stops that entirely. And it also stops the inequity between categories. There were some people, categories who were making a lot less from step to step. Than other individuals, and it's just how it was structured um many years ago. And this now, if we go to the next slide. Shows the first year of the contract. You can see that the base. Numbers, um which right now the base number is around fifteen. Dollars for custodians, you can see the increase of those base numbers more in line with actually what the. Uh member from the community asked us to have as a base number. Um the increments, that top number that says point nine zero, that now is a ninety cent increment in between, but. Bit more important than the ninety cent increment, it used to be thirty-five cents, by the way, um or forty-five cents in some circumstances. Fif- uh and then I think another group had fifty cents. Um it is consistent across. You'll see in the second year. That that increment goes to ninety-five cents. And the bases are changed a little bit. And then in the third year. That. Increment between goes to a dollar. And then, of course, some of the bases are different. So in three years from now, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Base salary would be seventeen uh to eighteen dollars, and you can see that there's a lot of equalization. There's also a lot of. Um capacity within the paraprofessional lanes, uh. We, this, this is. The changes here really point to the need differences, and so, and we were having difficulty trying to figure out how to be fair in that way. Uh we had matrices of, you know, does do kids, you get hit, I don't know, do you get hit three times, um you know, in in a week or something like that? That's um being uh probably a little bit inappropriate with my joke, it's not, it's not a joke, um. Just the fact that it was. A matrix and trying to figure out and determine what's happening, it's a lot of work to be a one-on-one. And so we figured. Regardless of what the situations are, um. We need to make sure that. Uh they're paid. That way throughout the entire year, working with with individuals. Um. And then there's difference between certifications with pair of ones, pair of twos, difference in what require, what requirements, what type of. Um professional development you have to maintain, what type of, you know, things you're uh able to do. So that's what that um ends up doing, and we also introduced during this. Time, I think in the second year, not the first year, we start to introduce a um. Good nighttime custodian differential. So. Twenty-five cents the first year, fifty cents that. Sorry, the second year, and then fifty cents that third year. So we. Got that language in, got the process started, and we can go from there, and. You can get to that. Last part of the matrix. You know, not taking twenty years to get there while things change, you can get there within that ten. That ten-step process. Individuals who have been in the district. For um ten or more years, when when they go and they reach that step ten, the following year, they would stay on step ten and get the whatever they. Cost increases of that step, plus they would get fifty cents on top of that. So. There's some. Appreciation for staying with the district during that timeframe. And nowadays, ten years are very, actually a very long time to stay within a position. Statistically speaking.
And Ruben, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
Steps do not directly relate to years specifically like they did.
That is correct. What, I mean, generally, they still tend to function that way. But when you go from an eighteen-step situation to a ten-step, you have to re-step people. And then there's um. We have other language in the contract that says when you bring people on. To the steps. You have to um make sure you're doing it in equitable fashion with those who are here, and so for instance. Let's say a custodian um for every. Let's say that someone who's on a step four becomes a step two. Then someone who, whatever, however much experienced that person who was on the step four and now is on two, you know, if someone comes in with. Um. You know, less than that experience or even the same, you know, they're not jumping that individual, that type of thing, yeah. So there's, we have. Through this process, um five or six different. Uh models or. Formulas now that we have to use for a little bit when people come onboard to the district. Which is fair. That's the presentation of. That. The adjustments of that contract. There's some other minor language changes, but. Those are the big items. Um part of that one twenty-three thousand. The four oh three B, the language actually in it is, of course, people have to sign up for that on their own. But the district will pay ten dollars toward the four oh three B in the first year per paycheck. Um paychecks happen every two weeks. The second year is twelve fifty. Same thing, and then the third year for all people in the bargaining unit, again, they do have to sign up for it, you can't. Put anything in there without them having it, um would be fifteen. It is not, we're not, that. Language was talked about and discussed, we're not matching, so they don't have to put anything in if they don't want to, we're doing that. We certainly will have education that we want to do. And um let people uh understand, you know, what. Contributing from their own salaries and so forth would do pre-tax. That's important to note, but um at this point, it's it's providing that, there was a discussion about matching. Um at this point in time, that's not where. Uh we we could go. It's. Numerically, numbers-wise or budgetary-wise, out of that one twenty-three, nine seventy-two, it's about twenty thousand, that's four oh three B. Twenty-five thousand in the second year. Thirty thousand in the third, third year, that's what the numbers. Play out to be within. A few hundred.
Good, any questions? From the, from the public? Or from the board? Hey. Ruben, thank you for that presentation and uh. If there are no questions, then we'll accept a. A motion to remove this to the official warrant.
I'd like to make a motion to place Article three on the. Official warrant.
Hey, thank you, Lisa. Okay, Daisy, thank you. If there are no questions, then. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes six zeros there.
Article four. Shall the school district, if Article three is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option. To address Article three cost items only. I have nothing to say.
Like to make a motion that we place Article four in the ballot.
Hey, thank you, Lisa.
Second that.
Thank you, Christine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Article five, shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars. To be placed in the S A U forty seven building maintenance capital reserve fund established in nineteen ninety, created for the reconstruction or repair of real estate. Buildings and capital equipment. Uh there is a slide on that one, I would be perfectly perfectly happy to talk. John, would you like to talk about some of these items so that they hear a different voice? And so that those of you who are here, I think John is amazing um and you you get introduced to him.
As far as the um the first item we go, the building construction trade shop, that's two hundred forty three thousand dollars. Uh to it it to improve their quality uh air, uh right now, they have uh. I wouldn't say any quality air, if they want air, they have to open up the doors or windows, they they just don't have any, and that's just not right. Uh when you get into sawdust and so forth, which is flammable, uh all kinds of things could happen. So we want to be able to put in a dust collector and improve the quality air, so they have good air exchange in that in that room. And that was two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. The. The forty four thousand two seventy three were ramps that we put into uh R M S, uh they were falling apart. Uh they were just all above ground, it wasn't put in uh properly, they they were they were really a hazard, we had to close one down in the back. Because it was just uh people would go through the the uh decking. And as we were putting those in properly and putting four feet down, we discovered, uh this is what happens in the district, we discover things all the time. We discovered a empty septic tank that was starting to collapse, and it was underneath the mud. So if we hadn't done the ramps properly and done it right and put them below, we never would have discovered that, but these are some of the things that we find. In this district, we find all kinds of flukes, we've had um. Uh electrical problems, jumping one uh uh. Uh breaker to another to try and get electricity, which is ridiculous, you can't do that, but we found those kind of things going on. We found aluminum foil used as fuses. Uh I mean, we just, no matter where we go or return, we find something that's crazy and ridiculous, okay, so uh. I know I've told the board they're quite tired of hearing it, I said I need a a blindside fund, just because there's things that happen all the time. The, we did replace the uh double doors in the Carolyn courtyard, that was around eighteen thousand, and we did another one over J G S was about. Twelve thousand, those are falling apart, their frames are all rusted, uh you could just shake them and replace, so we went ahead and replaced those. Uh for the twenty eight thousand dollars. Um we have a lot more uh doors and windows, the windows in this district are very, very old. They're not efficient whatsoever, uh some of them got a little bit of mold over J G S and the wood windows, so those need to be looked at. Uh we do have some vestibule doors in the um. I call it the pre-buy that they showed you early before the hundred twelve thousand dollars, there's uh the elementary schools. Uh the outside doors drag because of the rods and because of the age of those doors, so sometimes they don't close, which is a very bad security problem. Uh and because, in fact, R M S had uh damages done years ago that was never replaced, they would just try to fix them, those car ran into them. And they they just rattle and they don't close, and J G S is the same way, they don't, they don't close all the time. If you don't depress the rim panel properly, it just will drag, so that was uh gonna be replaced in that pre-buy, I call it. Uh there's still a lot of uh other doors that we haven't even addressed yet in the district that are rusting. That they're mostly hollow metal doors, and to me, uh coming from the aluminum business of the world, uh. You should be able to have aluminum doors, cuz hollow metal doors do nothing but rust over time, and they're rusting bad in a lot of places. The, we have lots of uh, the windows themselves, if if we replace the windows themselves, you're probably looking somewhere around eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. Maybe close to a million dollars now with inflation, just because a lot of the windows, except for the. Middle school, which we replaced in two thousand seven, all the other windows are pretty ancient. And do very little for uh efficiency, energy, very, very little. Um so we need to look at those, we need to look at uh flooring in all these schools. We've had really bad problems with flooring, especially carpeting, mold. Uh age, stained, you name it, I I'm, I know sometimes I get pushed back, I'm just for tiling, but. The carpets are 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 virus and bacteria magnets. Uh they get stained easily, but there's a lot of them, they're very, very, very old in this district, very old carpets. So um the H vac, obviously, that that we're working on. Uh is is coming along, we have two phases. Uh if I'm getting off topic, just let me know, but I just want to try to update everybody. We have two phases on the H vac uh phase one, which is the grade schools. Uh it's starting to wind down, some of their construction. Uh replacing the unit ventilators and and putting back mason and painting, so it may not happen until the warm weather, the summer. But they'll be bypassed with a new H vac equipment, they just will be sitting there as unit ventilators in the wall, but they're not gonna be functional. Uh but those two schools are now being um winding down. We had glycol issues uh in the whole district, in the hot water pipes, where we didn't have how the any, it was, you're supposed to have around thirty five percent. We had less than five, uh which you pray for uh no cold weather. Uh we've been lucky the last couple of years, but what we did do, and what we did negotiate with the E I. Is they are putting in glycol in the entire district, in all the hot water pipes as part of. You just go, you have to ask for things, and they have a contingency fund, whichever construction company does. And I went in there and asked them for that, and that's, you know, six digits, that they were pulling out of their contingency fund to take care of our glycol problems. We have this school is done, uh R M S was done over the Christmas week, and we have J G S that's supposed to be done this month. So, you know, that's a plus to have all that taken care of, cuz it's pretty hard to sleep at night when you have these sub-zero uh temperatures, and you know your pipes could go. Uh the phase two, which is we're under right now, uh with the middle school, high school. They have uh two units in place, uh number one, which takes care of the old uh middle school three-story building. That has been put in and balanced, and we're ironing out the wrinkles right now, cuz when you balance, it just takes a lot of effort to get the rooms right. And in the machines that work properly. Uh number five, which is the um Pratt Gym, that's in place. They've turned it on and they're getting ready to balance that one, they've done a hot water upgrade uh to the the school. Which they enlarged the pipes in the boiler room to push more hot water, to take care of all these new uh uh H vac uh systems. That has already been done.
Um so as you can see. And and he he could continue to move on, doing an incredible amount right here, it's it's brilliant, it's 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 really important information.
You have a terrific report that you should have like on the front page of the website.
Yeah.
You know.
No, that's good, it's good feedback, the the point being is that um the, and I think you stated it when you talked about the windows and so forth, there's about a million. The four hundred thousands to continue to do portions of this, doors are essential, we know. Um and then if we can tackle some flooring and some windows, whichever were the priority, some of these things take take forever to even come on in. Some of the doors and so forth, it's tough to get the the work done on time, but you can see why we would be asking for that much money. I think that um, you know, talking about how the money's been used already, these are all important, there's most. Those are actually all safety matters right there, that second bullet point. Uh actually, all those are safety issues, so.
I'm just trying to paint a picture of this at the beginning of so much that has to be done.
Right, so that's, we don't have uh any questions.
Kevin.
Nick, could you just go back one slide, please? Uh right there. Okay, on this one, it says the impact is thirty seven per thousand for Jeffrey and twenty eight for Ringe. Can you go back to the uh next article back? Uh I'm just. Um yeah. Eleven cents, okay, nine, and then if you went to the budget. Is it the aid, that's where, cuz, okay, I'm just was. So seeing the numbers increase for Jeffrey, but in the budget, they were low, the eight, that's all I needed, thank you.
Right, it's their grand money, the adequacy, it's taken out of the the budget. Yes, Laurel.
Um I have two questions. Where the current project that's in progress? Is, do you have a clerk of the works?
Yes.
And how often does that? Does that person report out?
We have a monthly meeting in the facility, and the media always updates us, and I'm in contact with them every week, well.
Thank you, I'm glad that you have one, very glad. Um could you describe the buying process you're going to go through to expend the four hundred thousand on the windows and doors, please?
Well, when I paint the picture, obviously, it's it's more than four hundred thousand dollars, a lot more than four hundred thousand. So it has to be done slowly, and I can't. With windows, you have to be very, very careful, cuz you don't wanna do onesies and twosies of windows, you might wanna pick a school. And I have rough numbers of each school, what the windows would be, and. That four hundred thousand dollars would be totally just one hundred percent gone to just windows, if you just did a school of windows, so. I would want to go at maybe some some doors, cuz I can specifically pick certain doors, but with windows. You've got to match and and do all kinds of openings and and a lot of prep work.
I I guess my question is, are you going to have? Are you going to go out to bid, get competitive pricing?
Oh, absolutely, I would, yes, I just got preliminary numbers right now from those people.
Given the amount of work that needs to be done. And Ruben, you talked a bit about this, I think. In late September, early October meeting about. Getting together a committee, community stakeholders, and developing a plan and hiring an engineer. And. Going through the, I know, very difficult process of. Developing an asset management or capital improvements plan, whatever you call it. And have a scheduled. Expenditure. I think it was the goal that you stated the first year you got here.
So we have a um, we have a plan that was developed by the Turner uh group. Provided to us.
That's a comprehensive capital improvements plan?
That that was what what we had asked for um. There are, I would say that an assets management plan is a little bit more having to do with, it's a combination of what. That information right there that we need to um turn into, we have to do some work. Internally, turn that into something more manageable and usable, and then also the change in the um. Our systems, our digital systems. Uh in putting all of our information in right now to make sure that all of, just everything, all of the. Uh of what we want to do, big, you know, with with big projects is put into the system and mapped out. As well as all of the maintenance that's going on is all put into the system. Uh we do have a tray here who um could speak to that in the process that we're doing, but there is a lot of work being done in that office.
So one thing that Turner did actually. Look at, I believe, was the the masonry facades.
Yes.
And they need work.
Yes.
Um, is that something? That, that what is the plan on pursuing that? Well, maybe put it out on that.
There there are so many different projects that we really still have work to do to try to prioritize. While at the same time, we're trying to integrate into it, the emergency situations that arise. Things that are discovered that. You know, we feel must be addressed now. And the major projects, many of which you're aware of, of the the lower field. There's kind of issues that we believe for various reasons need to be addressed. The upper field, we've got a beautiful track, we've got a hillside there that's got some problems, needs to be addressed. We've got a a big parking lot issue over at the Jeffrey Grade School, as well as a. Uh a gym floor issue, where you can't use the gym without. Basically granted, so we're trying.
So hence my concern, because you're gonna have to have a big bond issue, but if you don't get all this work done, you're never gonna get there. I mean, the planning work, hiring the engineer and getting the planning work.
As you know, because you were instrumental in getting it started, the Turner Group.
I I, yeah, I understand.
And you you know, they they were helpful in a number of areas, but in a number of areas.
Maybe we should have got for the low number on that one.
Right, right. Well, and and just a couple of that, we had done a bunch of uh. Work with E I, maybe with Turner as well, I don't, I think both of them actually, for that matter, they certainly conflicted in their viewpoints. Uh relative to bathrooms across this district, now we were talking about the need to upgrade those, and we pulled those off the warrants last year. To try to.
Bring that number down.
Bring that number down, so, yeah, there's, I think, there's there's planning and getting that information, there's also just how do we. How do we find the right, the political or just right timing of doing things?
But this is another year when I'm not, there's apparently no plans to develop the R F P. And get the construction manager or whatever the entity is that you need. Unless, cuz some of this is going to be geared toward that.
Some of it would need, possibly need to be used for architectural and um work having to do with the possible. Bond having to do with an A T C program um as well, that we would get seventy five cents on a dollar for. But that's. Not this year and.
Is that, is that going to be reconstruction and repair or new construction?
We'll see, we're not sure.
Can you use this for new construction? I don't, I don't think so, I don't think we can use this for new construction, but what we've been talking about is the. Is different.
That's why I said could be.
I mean, I I have a question, being the facility director, there's all kinds of things I can get prepared for, there's all kinds of projects I can get R F Ps for. I just gotta know whether, is it gonna be feasible to finance these things, I mean, I have to have some kind of direction of. Okay, these, what I have in mind is millions and millions of dollars to get this district up to par as far as. The fields, as far as the flooring, as far as the doors, as far as the windows, it it's, you know, there's just so much that has to get done. And to put an R F P together, you can do, but is it gonna go anywhere, because once I get a number, it's gonna be more than four hundred thousand dollars. It's gonna be millions. Different, just just the bathrooms alone is three million dollars.
The uh now will be four point five, the, that was an estimate. Um article five, uh four hundred thousand, we um talked about this as a school board. Uh that that was a number that uh the board felt it could support, are there any other questions?
Yes, Bob.
Bob Schuman, Jeffrey, uh speaking as a private citizen, not as your school district moderator. Listening to you, I could feel hard suction being placed on my wallet, there are a lot of things which you see need to be done. Some of them are short term, some are long term, and I like to echo what Laurel said. I'm wondering, and I don't know what the cost ramifications are versus a warrant article versus a bond. But I'm wondering, do we have any sensing as to if we took these? But I'm wondering, do we have any sensing as to if we took these things, reasonable number of tasks that need to be done? And recognizing the cost are not gonna go down to replace things, they're gonna keep going. Doesn't make sense perhaps too late this year, because you have to go through bond council, but for next year, to consider a bond, consider what needs to be done, short and medium term, and come up with a recommendation to the voters.
I think it's a great, personally, I don't know what the board, um, would indicate as a group, say about this, I think that's a, a very good idea, I think. You know, we got a lot of things happening at the same time, I think, I think this, uh, one of the ideas this year was to have fewer items on this warrant than what we've had in the past, the priority was that budget, not having two, two years in default, let's take step and let's take another step the following year, so think of it not trying to do everything all at one time, which is, it's because, because if you, if we do too much, we get not, we, we don't get what we need, and so, um, that's the, that's the idea, we talked about doing what you just stated, and, um, opted to say this is not that time. Do that, knowing inflation, knowing where our budget was gonna be.
Bonds are seen to be a more palatable project if the state can, can match some portions, and there are times when proposals can be put forward, and the state has initiatives that we could take advantage of. Um, yeah, local school districts, a number of them got some major, uh, renovation work through matching with bonds, and it's, that makes it a lot more powerful. And I know that we are constantly looking at what state initiatives are being offered, and always kind of have our fingers in that, so it, it's a lot of the, a lot of that is timing too, so that, that is definitely something that we'd be open to, but we're always looking for where can we get money other than taxpayer pockets is a huge piece of it.
With federal money, that's our money, so.
One, just one quick thing. The I agree with Laurel, the bigger part of the problem here, the bigger part of the problem here is you need to have maybe some of this money can be used to get a program going, so that you know, so, so in the trade, we call shovel ready. This district is not shovel ready for any major projects, whether it's windows, or whether it's whatever it is. We need to get shovel ready, that's an acronym, obviously, uh, so that the opportunity comes with the bonds out, the opportunity comes with funds, we're not, we're not, we're not shovel ready. Anyway.
Yes, let's get Frank a microphone.
Laurel's absolutely correct, you need to develop a capital improvements program for each building or for the whole district and entire. And then you can start chopping off some of these things, all you're doing now is throwing patchwork at stuff here and there, as, as, as need seems to arise. We've been able to do with, with the town's finances, that we have a comprehensive improvement pro- program for the whole town. And we fund capital reserve funds every year for those purposes, so when it comes time to buy a new fire truck, we can't ask it for five hundred thousand dollars or half a million, or seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for a fire truck. We have the money in the capital reserve when it's time. And we do that with all of our different projects, with D P W, water, sewer, picket department, we have a capital reserve fund to replace and repair and keep maintenance going. What you're doing is throwing splotches or, or spackle at a hole, in a, in a, in a, in a sheet rock wall, it's ready to fall down. It's not, you're not getting anywhere, four hundred thousand dollars, it's not gonna last. You're gonna fix a couple of doors, a field, fix a few ramps or whatever you're gonna do. But next year, you're gonna be back chasing your tail again on several more projects. You need to come up with a plan. And I, you know, Ruben, you said you were gonna do this five years ago, hasn't gotten done, I don't know why, it should have been done. It's hard, it's, 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 takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of effort. But the results, you can level all this spending out, and that's ninety percent of your problem here, is you can't level out your funding. Thank you, good night.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Laura. Okay, good night. Okay, I think we might be unless there are other comments relating to the capital reserve, I think we might be ready to move this to the warrant.
I'm wondering if we should raise the capital reserve. I mean, that's what we're hearing from everybody, so maybe we put in another four hundred thousand dollars so that we can hire an engineer, I mean, this is a criticism we're hearing from our from our townspeople. Should we discuss it?
I would be hard pressed to put in more money in that. No, it's planned for what it needs.
Yep, maybe we put in money for the plan. We're gonna use this money to fix all the problems that are gonna come up and fix them correctly, so that they don't come up again.
All right, so I have a question then. And this is to our facilities director, John LeClaire. John, my perspective is that you've been working off of a plan. And while I acknowledge the validity of the suggestions, I don't feel that you're just trying to throw shackle, I mean, the spackle at, at holes, although clearly when a hole appears, you have to do something, fix it. Uh, I don't know, what, what do you, what would you recommend we do based on what you, what we're hearing?
Well, if, if you wanna have all the numbers, we have numbers for all these items that people have been saying we don't. We have numbers, obviously, they're gonna change, because all those numbers only hold for thirty days, so they're gonna change. But if you wanna put numbers up there, yeah, I mean, I have several hundred thousand dollars for flooring, I have a million dollars worth of doors and windows, I have three million dollars worth of restrooms. I mean, there's numbers and there's been work done behind the scenes to get numbers, this is just, to me, fueled to, to feed the, the, uh, the pot. If you want to have, uh, warrants for it, I can put warrants together, we had warrants, yeah, like Ruben said, if I had warrants last year for restrooms, because of the emotional mindset of people, we gotta time this, if we just throw the numbers up there, you may see five million dollars up there, is that gonna scare people away? Uh, you know, we're trying to feed this reserve anyway, and whatever we can use it for the capital reserve, I have this Turner numbers, they got into everything but windows and doors. They had numbers for more HVAC, they had numbers for tiles, they had numbers for flooring, for railings, for all kinds of things for the next ten years, we have numbers.
We, we had numbers for the parking lot, we have numbers.
We have, we have it all.
We have it on sheets, we have everything.
It's just.
Doing it and putting something forward that's going to push down, have them, have individuals vote against the budget so that our kids are harmed by having reduction of staff is not acceptable. And so, yeah, if we're in it together, we can produce the multi-year stuff, we, we purchased it, we have that information. We have to have a willingness and a desire, and I think we probably need to spend some time with more communication and so forth within the community on a variety of things to want to go forward and, and do that sort of thing. Uh, we've done an incredible amount in the last several years, certainly this HVAC project alone. We knew that was the number one thing when we, when we first came in, like HVAC, 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 wow, we were able to get that accomplished, that's fantastic, and, and do it at a reasonable price and make sure that we have the infrastructure in here for the future, and I say reasonable price, better than what it would be right now. Um, and certainly if we did it piecemeal. But uh, John's number here for, I mean, of course, he wants more than four hundred thousand, we all want more than that, I think personally, we believe that the, it should be put into the budget.
It's an emergency fund, is what.
It is, is what it is, exactly, you know, we should be putting that two million that were below, uh, that's, you know, the, what I talked about before, gosh, if that were in the budget, so our um, we were actually at the state average, then I think we'd be, you know, able to, uh, regularly take off that information, these are all buildings.
Yes, Charles, I think what we're missing is both Jeffrey and Ringe have capital improvement committees who put together long-range plans, so you can see a picture of uh, twenty twenty-seven, this is what we're going to need. All right, and to get there, we're gonna either have to buy it that year, or we're gonna have to set money aside for it. So what it does, it allows the public to see, hey, here's a big thing that we have to do. All right, and so we need to, 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 uh, balance out the, the, the money we set aside for, rather than trying to pay it all in one year. That's the whole purpose of C I P, is to try to keep the budget flat, as opposed to, um, one year investing uh, three hundred thousand dollars in a fire truck. All right, and then the next year, having that money in a general fund but not having a plan for how to use it. So, so what, what I think we need is simply a, a simple picture that says, this is our capital improvement plan. These are the major ticket items, like the freezer. All right, we could, we knew the freezer was, was gonna need repair sometime, so a replacement sometime, what we should have done and this is looking backwards playing Monday morning quarter, right, is put that on a plan that says, hey, we're gonna do a freezer in twenty-three, twenty-four. What is it gonna cost, are we gonna pay for it that year, in that year's budget, or are we gonna need to save up a little bit for it? So, if, if you if you ever go to a town, um, budget meeting, a town meeting or an S B two deliberative session, all right, you'll see that presented when they start talking about capital projects, you'll see them present. We need this warrant article to set aside thirty thousand dollars to replace fire truck number two, because it'll be, uh, end of life in ten years. So after ten years, your thirty thousand dollars is three hundred thousand, and you can make a down payment on a fire truck.
Uh, good point, good point.
Like, if I may, we had this conversation exactly this night and when we cut five hundred thousand nearly, because, and, and what we cut were facility items that were in the warrant articles, and we, and we cut a whole bunch of stuff there, but we did ask for that plan. And is that something that the, that the facilities committee can do, I don't know how to get that, but we did a year ago, ask for that plan.
There are a lot of, a lot of plans that have been developed, it's been very interesting behind the scenes as to what's been put forward and then said no, this is not correct, let's do it this way, and then to have other individuals say, no, that's not correct, and so forth. There's a lot of conversation, a lot of talk, there's a lot of stuff that's done and ready to roll. We have to be serious about wanting to improve the facilities, and if that's the case, and we have the idea, absolutely. Let's go do it, we've got the numbers. We know what needs to be done in order.
Yeah, I would like to also caution not to publicly display any security issues that we have. We don't need to show pictures of doors that don't close to the public, invite any near the well action.
So, so what I think what we're hearing, I, I, you could say there's a consensus. It, it's not that no work has been done on trying to develop facility plans for different pieces, but to try to unify that into a capital improvements plan is certainly something that seems to be needed, and it's time to restart that effort. And if we have data on these different projects we've mentioned, and we do want some of them, so we can bring that in to the discussion, update those numbers, and, uh, you're prepared next time with a global number and a, a timeline for when those, uh, projects are gonna need to be done. One of the things it also does is set the expectations. So five years in a row, people see a warrant article, well, that's something we need to do five years from now. Number one, the dollar amount impact is gonna be smaller than if we pay for it all, and what, but there's also an information flow or communication there, but this is something that you guys have supported for three or four years, you know? So it's not a major surprise.
Right. You've already invested in it, you knew about it, because you were given the information and so forth.
I'm, excuse me, I'm on the C I P for the town of Ringe. Uh, and we basically have about, we try to keep it under about three hundred thousand, but we have about one-sixth the budget for you. So the voters are quite used to seeing around three hundred thousand, it could be a hundred thousand for a particular truck, putting away another fifty for a future truck and so forth. Uh, and it's, it, it's, uh, basically accepted by the voters, and very, very rarely do they fail. Uh, but, you know, if you come up with a large number, as Charlie mentioned, um, that is a big issue. You know, it's, it's, you could wanna create a pattern, uh, that people understand.
Thank you. Good, good point. So can I make a motion? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove Article five to the decision. Okay, so we have a motion to move Article five to the official ballot in a second. Thank you, is, is there any discussion? Seeing none?
I just have a quick comment that I really wanna strongly thank, uh, John and Trey for the incredible, uh, work that they've done to be shovel ready. Um, the, the amount of work that you've done this year, um, is phenomenal, what you guys have, have been juggling is phenomenal. Um, and I'm just really, really grateful, and wish we could give you guys way more funds to be working with, but, um, but well done, you guys.
I'd like to echo what you suggested. Since you guys have done a great work. Given the situations. I don't know how I would handle it when I woke up in the morning and found out that the pipes had broken underneath the Pratt, now you've had to dig them out, and there's water all over the place.
Again.
What's that?
Again.
Again. And then the tiles that come up. And shutting down school for a week while we looked at, while we had to repair mold. All right, well, thank you for the, the comments and, uh, record the question. All those in favor of moving this to the official warrant, signify or say no?
I.
I.
Oppose? Non-oppose? And we move on to.
Hey, Article, Article six. Um, last article tonight, Sheldon School District vote to raise and appropriate up, up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the expendable trust fund established in two thousand and five known as a special education contingency fund, created for the purpose of building a reserve for unanticipated special education costs with such amount to be funded from the June thirtieth fund balance available for transfer on July one. That's a little bit of history. And we've already talked about this at length.
So what's in our current account? Those are just the new funds added.
Oh, sorry, the above, current balance, two hundred ninety-nine thousand. Top, top right there.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, I found it. Quickly, we got two out of district placements. Exactly. And by creating this fund, the area was also budgeted more tightly. That was part of the reason we created this fund. So they wouldn't have to have large surpluses in the event of somebody moving to the district unexpectedly. Okay, are there any questions about this item? Okay. Okay, seeing that, yes.
Um I'm sorry, it says no additional tax impact, so this is just a transfer of funds from the general account into this.
Right, this would be from a reserve leftover at the end of the year.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I move that we move, I move that we uh move Article Six to the.
Um to the warrant, okay, good, thank you Pauls. Okay, thank you Lisa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And that passes six zero. Okay. Warrant article recommendations. Is there something we need to do on that? Think all of these items passed six uh zero, so. Is there, will there be something additional that we need to uh? Well, I mean, it's. We need to provide a recommendation, you know, can we just ask the board, do you wanna go with your vote? Cause it was all of them were unanimous anyway. Okay, what was your question?
I couldn't hear you.
We need to vote on our recommendation for each one of these warrant articles. Alright, and my suggestion is that we. Go with the vote on the warrant article that we made. In other words. The easy way is just read off the article, I won't ask for a recommendation.
Carrie suggests that we close the public hearing first.
Sure. Sounds good. Yes.
Before we close, uh on your first warrant article presented, you amended it. Decreased by two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Yes, you wanna vote for this because you had to vote on the whole warrant item, the total dollar amount. On the first, on the budget. You amended it by reducing by two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, now it's approved. So what you just said. Makes sense, you wanna vote on each one individually to make sure you've covered it. Bob Shawman.
Alright, so. Kevin, good night and thank you for being. Alright, so we're gonna go through and we're gonna.
Are we supposed to close the public hearing?
Oh sure, so let's uh let's close the public hearing, someone wanna make a motion to the head. You need a motion to.
We'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Good Christine, thank you and Daisy, thank you, all in favor, signify. Okay, so the the public hearing is closed and thank you, thank you. Okay. So we're gonna ask the board to. Recommend these, these articles or affirm their recommendation, good night. So Article One. We have a motion from somebody to uh re- recommend these. Article One as amended unanimously.
No, Article One is the one to see.
Oh, sorry, Article Two, I was thinking, you're right, thank you, thank you. Okay, so Article One.
Make a motion to recommend Article One unanimously.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll second that.
And thank you Chris, and all in favor? And can we get a motion to. Recommend unanimously Article Two as amended?
I'll make a motion to recommend unanimously Article Number Two as amended.
Okay, thank you Chris.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you Daisy, all in favor? Alright, thank you. And Article Three. Can we get a recommendation for Article Three?
I make a recommendation, we recommend Article Three. Unanimously.
Great, thank you, thank you Daisy. And a second.
I'll second.
Steve, thank you, all in favor? And then Article Four.
Motion that we place Article Four in the ballot and recommend unanimously. I second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, Article Four.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. And Article Five, to raise and appropriate some four hundred thousand for the building maintenance reserve.
I so move. Article Five.
Okay.
To be voted on.
And Lisa, you second.
And I'll second.
And you second, okay, all in favor? And and Article Six, our last one.
Same thing. I move Article Six be recommended by this board unanimously.
Great, thank you Forbes, thank you Christine, thank you everybody for your patience, all in favor? Okay, so these are all recommended unanimously. This felt like a. Good participation, I'm uh sorry there weren't more people online, but it was nice to have.
Maybe not about ten people online, do you ever say, oh, we have people.
Okay, but thank you for that information Nick. So we have some work ahead of us, Nick, you sent out a communication, a draft communication plan today, thank you for that work. That's excellent, and uh I feel like we're, you know, we're making a start. We're making a start towards communicating the importance of passing this budget.
I reckon, I uh appreciate Ruben's willingness. To very gut-wrenchingly. Cut cut the budget the way he did, I know it was not easy, but I I certainly agree that. It's better than a default budget.
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely, and uh. Let's go, let's go get it passed and then I'm sure that Ruben and Carrie will find ways to make it to make it work.
You think the same people who would be voting for a default budget would. Vote in favor of um. A long-term capital improvement plan type of thing?
You know, I I think if the communication is there, maybe maybe they will. I mean, we we did decide as a community twenty years ago that we wanted to. We want to stay with the buildings we had and not move to a new site.
I mean, it does make sense, the the towns do it every year and it's small increments and that's the way to do it. And some of the people that spoke today are used to that and seem to. Prove of that method.
Of course, this these numbers won't be so small, though, I mean, we can talk about it as comparing it to the town's capital improvement. Plan.
Yeah, I know.
For the school, it's gonna be a much bigger number and to have some of these. You just don't wanna get in a position of cutting services in education. To pass that, to pass. Building.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Structural stuff.
As Charlie says. As Charlie said, it's very tricky because you don't want to put the education of our learners at risk.
So so it is, it's gonna require judgment, uh including what we put into that capital reserve. Fund because you can always wish for the moment too, you know, it's gotta be realistic. And then the portion of it that you're gonna fund, it's gotta be realistic too and. Always needs to take second place to the education and safety of our children.
We adjourned.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
I move we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, well, I don't even have to ask all.